Calling in order. Six. Yeah, three five. I also was over there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly God, we have a time for you and the taking of Jesus. Thank God we're together today. I ask that you bless us, be with you tonight, that you have your way here, and give them all wisdom to conduct business before the time of Middleton and Jesus. Amen.
Roxanne Towsky in here.
And Crummond?
Bonnie Union.
All right. I sent out the minutes to... Anybody have a chance to look at those for morning? Any corrections needed? No? All right, off the can, motion to accept?
Only the motion to accept.
All over the neighborhood?
Aye.
All right, both have walked the planning board, I think that's an old.
Yeah, this is just the official signing, the local office. Okay. That's the working board in the conservation.
Cell phone tower discussion. I know we've had a long conversation about that. And we've been trying to figure out what's going on with that, how many people on there right now. I know that, Casey, you were putting up information for us at one time?
I was only reaching out to the company a little bit.
Okay.
And they didn't have that.
And they were glad to? All right.
I tried to wait.
Carl, you know who is up on the cell phone right now on the tower?
Kurt, it should be the original 911. It's basically like a AT&amp;T, just like a piggyback. I'd be able to dig with that and Verizon then again, like a year and a half ago.
So Verizon's up there?
Verizon's supposed to be up there.
Okay, and the T-Lo one, they just got their permit like a couple weeks ago and they said they'd like three, it's like months. They said they were gonna be joining? Okay.
What I will say on that note is, is in the contract for that cell phone tower, you'll probably have to reach out to them, like I did with Verizon key report. But the town revenue increases every time you know the provider. But they don't go away, they just, or they just put Verizon as like, oh, poor guy.
Imagine that.
What do you check on?
No, it's part of the contract.
Anybody have any other questions or comments about that? No, seeing none. We'll move on to, all right, our department reports. Starting with emergency management.
Hey, we are the fire chief from emergency management director. So I do have some emergency management stuff this month. Myself and firefighter Prockman attended county preparedness meeting of Travis County Federal Health down in Summersworth. There was a couple presentations from the state most related to health pandemic kind of responses. We're gonna continue to be done quarterly basis and get out there, we have kind of a voice in that end, so we can utilize what resources are needed. Myself and Chief Ferguson attended a school evacuation preparedness meeting in New Durham with Governor Wentworth School District and Department of Security and Emergency Management. I was mostly on communication. Said we were, if we were having an event, I would move the students and staff offsite and get the students rehanded their families. Firefighter Prockman wrote the town a new local emergency operations plan, just finalizing the details, and then that will be submitted to the state, it needs to be updated every five years, or a few years past that, so I just wanna thank him. He took his own time and did that for us, off the clock, so that was very nice of him to do. And we're working with the school to explore some grant opportunities to get a generator at the school, as that's our designated shelter. The school is wired, there's a pad there for it. We're just gonna need to get a generator and get it put on a pad and install, so that's in the works, we're hoping to find some grant opportunities. We'll see how the political environment plays out with grant opportunities right now, but either way, we're working towards getting a generator for the school. So that's all I have for emergency management. Anybody have any questions on?
I just have a question regarding the school. Since it is an emergency shelter, does anybody in town have keys for that, other than the principal?
The fire department.
The fire department.
Yep. So we have an OX box in the building, so we can access the building if needed. Then the shelter resources are stored between Rochester and Farmington, the county resources, so we would just have to call them and have them. That's a great question. All right, I'll move on. Sorry, Luke Tim, I'll just move right on to fire.
Absolutely. Fire, you're good.
So as far as the fire department, in the month of March, we had 24 calls for service, 15 medical calls, and nine fire responses. We had, we did have to call in two mutually ambulances, one from Milton, one from Farmington. We did have a third mutually ambulance, but that was for a second patient on call, our truck was already entered to the hospital. Engine one responded to Wakefield for station coverage for a small fire they had in East Wakefield. Tanker five and car one, myself, Assistant Chief Bordeaux, and Engineer Rivera responded to a second one building fire in the town of Farmington. Later in the month, Engine one and Tanker five, with myself, Engineer Rivera, Captain Bowden, Lieutenant Laulette, firefighter Wigan, firefighter Peter responded to a second one building fire in the town of Wolfboro. Unfortunately, during that, that Engine five, or Tanker five really did break down, had to be towed.
It was the little driver.
It was, it ended up just being a simple issue with the fuse, and it killed the batteries and the truck died, so we did have to have it towed. Between the towing and repair, it was just over a thousand dollars to get the truck back in service. Crowd's towing didn't take very good care of the town, though, as far as the towing bill goes, it was less than half of what it should have been for a heavy truck to be towed. And they did it in a self truck. So we just wanna thank them for working with us to help keep costs down. We're continuing to work on updating our policies and our reporting to the state. At this point, we are up to date with our NFRs reporting, which is our National Fire Institute reporting. It needs to be submitted every year. We've been in the process, it sounds like the last couple years, trying to catch up. We are now officially caught up, which helps with our grant status and stuff like that. So that's, that was a project that we, that we worked with, and we're, we're up to speed, as well as our, our reporting software is now being done through the state, which is at zero cost to the town. So it was a savings of about $1,600 a year to switch to the state's platform, so that's all up and running, and we've been working with it, and it's been working pretty well. Our apparatus renumbering and rebranding is underway. Guys, probably once you saw when you came in, the command vehicle looks a little different. The lettering was falling off the vehicle, so we had to have it replaced. The ambulance, part of our rebranding kind of put a different foot forward, we did have the ambulance change, it's no longer green, I know most of the members are pretty disappointed about that. No, I'm serious, not though, it does look different. Also, it has been renumbered as ambulance three, so we don't have three ambulances, if anybody's wondering. We only have one, we're just trying to get rid of our repeating numbers. We do share a radio frequency with Farmington, New Durham, and Milton. They all operate ambulance one. As well as we did, it just makes everything confusing for dispatch, so we're gonna have ambulance three, just take some of the confusing out of things. So that, that's kind of why the, it's the backstory and why the ambulance is now ambulance three. You only have one, it just says ambulance three, it's the same truck, it just looks a little different now. The new fire truck is in production. It will be Engine four when it comes. It's replacing Engine one, but it'll be Engine four again, part of getting rid of the repetitive numbers. So myself and Engineer Rivera will go down to inspect the truck and drive it back from Louisiana in early June at the latest. So the truck's in production now. They said early June is the latest it'll be completed, so pretty soon here we'll have the new truck here in town. Probably take us about a month to get it in service. You guys will see both of the trucks in the firehouse for a period of time, but that's just because we have to get equipment and stuff. Deputy Chief Manchester developed a training plan for the department, and that's been implemented, and it's been going very well. All the officers are training off, taking turns teaching the firefighters some new skills. So we're moving forward in that, and everything's going pretty well over there. Anybody have any questions on anything? All right, thank you.
Howie Parker?
Dan Phillips, PHI RIPS, 18 years old, resident parole agent. This is from March 10th through April 14th. We changed the batteries in the loader, and that's 2014, still have the original batteries, so that says something to shut-off switches and being garage, being impeded. Replaced the headlight in truck number one, and also the plow control module. What that does is, when you put the plow on, the module switches from the headlights on the truck to the ones on the plow. That one, one part of that module was, was no good, and the headlight was burnt out. Put up the posted signs, spoke to all the contractors in town that were working at the time, just so they had a good understanding of what we were expecting. Checked on the drainage issue from the last meeting down here on Ridge Road. Constantly was checking on all the dirt roads as they were thawing out, made sure there was no soft spots that needed to be taken care of, and tried to take care of potholes as we could. They are pretty well thought out now, there's a few cold spots. We've been raking and backdriving with the loader, trying to fill in the potholes, and then as soon as they dry up fully, we'll get the rake out, pull everything in, we'll get everything touched up on the dirt roads. Changed the oil in truck number one. Chopped out cross culverts, had a lot of rain, so clearing out leaves and debris and stuff like that. Some of them still had some stone on, but they're all pretty well thought out now. We pushed up the sand at the salt yard with the loader. We, we use sand, of course it's down there with no salt in it, and plain sand, so it chunks up, so you have to get into where it's soft, just so you can use it the truck, so pushed all that out, cleaned that up a bit. Washed all the trucks oiled and greased, trucks in the sanders. As I said, backdriving the dirt roads, trying to fill in the potholes with the loader. We did rake, raked Fox Road. That was the first road that we had raked, and of course then we muddered up again with all the rain and the other stuff. Took care of the pit permit up in New Durham, which allows us to have our materials for gravel, sand, stone, stuff like that. That's what we had crushed this, this last year. Plowed, treated a five-and-a-half inch storm on 324. Checked on the bottom of that lane, that was after, after the town meeting, there was a bit of a question on bottom of that lane, on the extension part of it, the dirt part of it. So I think we got that pretty well figured out.
What was the result?
The result is, there is a letter in the, in the registry of deeds that says that we only take care of that to where we have been, and any subdivided lots that we're gonna apply to that too. So we actually should have letters from each one of the lots that are on that, saying that they are aware of that the town doesn't take care of it, and they don't hold the town liable for any damages to their vehicles and all that. So now I'm saying, all right. Rob did most of the labor on that. Called Caterpillar about getting the bucket rebuilt. As I said, 2014, just regular wear, you know, screwing up sand and gravel and stuff. So what my plans are, I may try to get, I may try to buy another bucket, so we'll have two buckets, send that one out, get it, get it redone, unless they can do it in a timely fashion, and can utilize, you know, other equipment rather than the loader at that point, we'll, we'll get it figured out. I also asked him about a brush more for the loader as well, so the guy is supposed to be getting back in salesmen. Plowed and treated another two-inch storm on 329. That one there was the one that was mostly sleet. The following day, had to treat the roads, we had rain too sleet on that one. Fixed the front plow lights on on number 27, which is that medium-sized truck. And that one also had a leg on the module that was burnt out, but I was able to use the module off of truck number one because of the way the lights are wired. It only used two of the legs on the modules, so I was able to use that one in place of the one that was not good. So we're not down on that. Modules are $157 a piece, so I was glad that that would be. Checked the roads for downlands and trees after a windy night. Treated all paved roads, we had less than an inch on 43. Took the pump readings, which we do every month, usually at the beginning of the month, we take the pump readings over there for the fuel and gasoline. And then there's fogs that you're checking with, so the school has their own, the fire department has their own, highway department, police department. So that's what keeps track of all the fuel and what the usage is, and those all go over the channel. It's kind of a tedious job, but that's the way we keep track of it. Again, backdrived the roads with the loader, also tried to clean up the town beach, which is the turnaround for the bus as well, was getting kind of trophied by the ends of pavement, so tried to take care of that, and we'll, we'll tune that up again. Did four driveway permits, one on Lake Shore, one on Pinkham, and two on Spruce. Changed teeth on the York rate. York rate is what we use to smooth up the dirt roads. And on the bottom of the York rate, there's some kind of like teeth that are in, are in holders, and what you have to do is loosen up the whole thing, and take each one out individually for your advice, knock them out with a, a chisel, then a chisel, and then put the new one in for that again, so. That was a good idea that they put those on. Plowed and treated a four-and-a-half inch storm on 412. Did get a new key for the Silver Street turnaround, the gate down there is Town Forest, and it's also owned by Matt Shagman. Matt went over there and found that the lock wouldn't work, and so he did a new lock, got another key made up, and I gave the key to Chief Wheeler, so he has the key for that eventually having situations out there. And I did get a, I got an email from Alliance Trucks, which is what the, where we got, actually the new trucks, we got from Creeseville, but Alliance takes care of all the extended warranty stuff. So they offered up a, they offered up an extended warranty. We have a year to think about this, but I'm just gonna present it to you guys tonight as far as what they're... So the engine and after treatment for seven years, and I believe right now it's a three-year one, but I'll look, I'll look into that to make sure. But the engine after treatment is $5,990 for a seven-year extended warranty, so that's miles or years, usually the years come first, but like I said, that's $6,000 for that. And then they also have one on the transmission, which is an Allison's automatic, they're pretty bulletproof. That one there, they extend that out another four years, so that would be seven years, and that's $1,600. So, but like I said, we have a full year to enact this, so September 22nd is our, our deadline. So we'll do a little more homework on that, and then we can decide, I don't know what they did in the past. Myself, I'm not an extended warranty type of guy, but that doesn't mean we can look at it, and if it makes sense to us that we wanna do it that way, then we can do that. They just, Viking just called me today, and they're the people who do the body and the plow gear on the trucks. So they just called me today and said we could drop off the new truck to them any, any time next week or the week after, and the money is in place for that, to have that worked on. We were just waiting on the call from them, for them to slow down and have the time to do it, so we'll be taking that up at some point. Any questions?
Actually, I had one. What was your thought of the drainage issue on Ridge?
Evidently, there was some snow or something that was blocking the culvert, or the, the cash basin, at the time that I went over to check on it, it was already going to the cash basin, so. What's that? The posted signs will be coming down Thursday morning, and I've had some calls from different companies asking to come up through, and I've been granting them permission on a case-by-case basis right now, but Thursday morning it'll be down, so anytime Thursday morning on will be good. All right?
All right.
That was good.
Thank you. All right. Chief Curtis?
Do have some reports that are on the table, kind of shortened it up a little bit this month as far as kind of leading off on projects that we're still just continually working on, and will continue to work on. But I did add one new category to the report as well, you'll see on the top of the first line, calls for service. I kind of felt it was beneficial for everyone, just to understand. So I put our calls for service in there, in the town of Middleton, police department took 188 calls for service through dispatch. And then you'll see how that kind of breaks down. Incidents investigated, we had 26. We didn't have any arrests or motor vehicle accidents this past month. We did have a couple vehicles off the road during those snow storms, but no damage to the cars, so then it resulted in accident reports. Nine citations or motor vehicle warnings were issued. To get back to the calls for service, so what that is, is that's, that's everything that we've been called to through dispatch. And you'll see that the numbers below that may not coincide with it, because it could be simply phone call requests, or, you know, you respond to somebody's home for an incident and come to find out it's, it's, you know, a civil matter, not a legal matter, things along those lines, but we responded to the calls. So that's why I kind of put that in there, just so everyone kind of has an understanding there. Continue with training. We continue to work on recruitment. We conducted interviews with some candidates. Will continue that process moving forward into the next month. Right now, I'm also working on a study right now, a pay study for part-time employment. Our pay rate is rather low at this point for part-timers. So I've reached out to Carroll County, I'm working on Scranton County now, just trying to get statistical numbers, because there aren't a lot of agencies out there that have part-time. It's, it's basically the smaller ones, more prone towards the Carroll County as opposed to Scranton County. And I'll get that up to you guys at some point, probably during this coming month, just to kind of look at the part-time pay, and see what we can do, if anything there. I completed the cruiser inventory as well, I emptied out all the cars. The cars were equipped with an amount of gear that's necessary for the game of all your calls, anything from measuring gauge, CPR mask, D-FIBs, block hub kits, throw rope, fingerprint kits, all those tools are on it all. So what I found was, all the cars were in disarray, if you will. You know, it was just big piles of stuff in the trunk, and there was no rhyme or reason. So I took it, I emptied out every single car, took every single police equipment we had of all. And then I, we had some storage containers already in the shed that I'm, that I'm reutilizing, and I'm slowly going through all that equipment, getting rid of stuff that is broken, functioning and not correct, and putting new equipment here in each car, so that each car is outfitted exactly the same. So no matter which car you jump in, you get everything you need. I was a little hampered with that, with the weather, because Mother Nature can't seem to make up her mind, and everything's in the shed, so I'm outside the whole time doing it. Conducted further training with our secretary. I'm happy to say that she's working out well. She is definitely a take the task at hand kind of person, very confident in her, her abilities, she's learning pretty quickly, and I'm already giving her ancillary tasks outside of stuff that I would give to the task secretary. And she's, she's doing good with that as far as reaching out, making contacts, getting follow-up information, whatever you're doing for me. Some things I didn't put on the sheet, obviously, is just day-to-day stuff that we deal with day-to-day. Obviously, we went to New Durham in conjunction with the schools as far as the reunification plan. We do have Homeland Security coming here in Middleton next week, and they're coming here to meet with myself and Jared, and a couple other surrounding communities to further look into, basically what would be a mass casualty response, and what the resources are, and how we would, how we would utilize those resources in such an instance, so. Other than that, the only thing to share with everyone is Spectrum did reach out to me today, and they are doing line work, or fiber work, without the shore, here in Middleton, starting at midnight tonight, so there may be service interruptions as far as your phone service built between midnight tonight and noon time tomorrow, so they strongly urge people, for those that are listening or watching the video, if you need 911, or if you have an emergency, have a cell phone, can use a cell phone, dial 911 to be those hours. The lay line should still work, but they just, if for some reason somebody is having an issue, they wanted people to know to just pick up the cell phone, but, and they did send out, as I understand it, a mass message to the, to the residents here in town as well. With that said, they are gonna be working in town over the course of what potentially could be the next few weeks. Working night shifts from, like I said, 12:00 AM to 12:00 PM. They did contact me as far as road details and police services during those hours. They're gonna get the roads where they're gonna be, what they're gonna be working on, and I told them once they got me that list, we could discuss where, when, if traffic is needed, traffic assistance is needed, so.
And with that, that's about it. Any questions?
Chief, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Please don't let these go the wrong way, because I know and I see out there constantly, the citations seem low. Is that just because people are driving better, or?
To be honest with you, the citations are low, just because of other, like, maybe the prime example, I had a plethora of police reports to write.
Yeah.
So I wasn't able to be out there on the road. But they are kind of low, and I will say that we've conducted, uh, conducted directly controls or enforcement over 153, from Lee Field up to Mill, Governor's Road, and then also from the Mill down, down to the town beach. And all in all, relatively, everybody is, is driving pretty...
Pretty good.
Yeah, if you will. Don't get it wrong, there's, there's some here and there, so.
Yeah.
In place, I, I see you out, so I'm going to...
Yeah, no, as, as far as the traffic goes, one thing, another thing, I know I've spoken with a couple of you one-on-one basis, but here in the coming weeks, I'm also gonna submit a letter up to you folks as far as requesting the state to have a revaluation of the speed limits on Route 153. For, for, for multiple reasons, one being the, just the alternating changes of limit. One being the, just the alternating changes of limit. If you go from Wakefield, coming from Wakefield is thirty-five, then it bumps up to fifty, then it drops back down to thirty, then it goes up to fifty, then it goes back down to thirty-five. So, one complaint I got from the traveling owners here in town is uh, you know, basically that it's hard for them to, to realize which cylinder ring when I pull them over. The other part of that as well is I think the last time an evaluation was done for the speed limits, I don't think that those areas were developed as much as they are now. I could be wrong. I haven't seen the date of when the last one does, was done. But I will say from putting the speed trail route on Route One Fifty-three, it's out there right now as well. Fifty miles an hour now through that road is, is pretty fast in, in certain areas.
And it drops pretty quick too, from fifty to thirty-five.
It does. And, and so I had to travel through there, want to travel through there just to make sure the speed trail was, was operated properly. And as I traveled through there, it dawned on me, because I, I usually do forty or through there, maybe forty-five. But as I was traveling through there at fifty, fifty-five miles an hour, it dawned on me with residential areas around there that if something jumps out in the road, you don't have much, if they're narrow roads, you'd be dealing with it.
Especially in those kind of problems.
Yeah, where it's illegal and whatnot. So, I am gonna send that up to you folks here in the coming weeks. It's something that has to be requested by the board, so I mean, it can't be requested by me, so. All right, well, thank you.
Any questions for Chief? No? All right. All right, um, having our present report. Uh, looks like we have probably a grand total of fifteen thousand seven hundred, seven dollars and seventy cents. Questions? So, the current proceeds to month for the eight thousand one hundred thirty-five dollars and forty cents? Uh, let's see, current report. Uh, let's see, we have current report, reviewed information provided me to print down items in the month. All right, all checks are in sequence and have been counted for. All expenditures matched those shown on statements. All deposits matched those shown on payment statements. Uh, payment statement balanced and reviewed with no irregular, no irregularity. No irregular, irregular, you know, I can't even. No way, I, I think you guys don't say, so. None more than that, all right. Uh, all creation has been organized and filed the year and review. The town's accountant includes fine summary for all transactions for the month, including expenditures, summary deposits, and a summary of outstanding transactions. Um, so, so we have a breakdown of, say, return check, have our accounts available. Two million, seven hundred forty-five thousand, eight hundred sixty-two dollars, seventy-one cents. Interest on setting was seven point six oh two. Who's front revolving fund, forty-six thousand, three hundred nineteen eleven. Ambulance revolving fund, seventy-seven thousand, five hundred thirty-four, twenty-nine. And operations, two thousand four hundred, uh, eight hundred forty-three, fifty-nine. All right, any questions?
This one, I think this is for January, for the month of January.
Yes. Chief's still working on getting rest of every hour, anything else, please.
Do you want to post that, do you post it in your chest?
Sure.
Basically, we'll say, um, they want to, sure. Some of these older ones I'm working on because some of them were payroll checks. So, I'm working on those.
I was gonna say that, that's how hard of a list.
Yep.
We have looked at.
Yep.
Year after year. Uh, there's also terrible duplicates on here.
Cause I'm taking care of them. What I did is I did an account's payable check to them and had them cash it. I haven't had the keys to go back in to see if the account payables checked, this cash. And what will happen if it did, I will clear this one payroll, because you can't delete a payroll check. So, I will um, void out that account's payable when that, when the account paid the check clears.
Right. At some point, not right away, we could get a list of which ones you did that for.
Seven, yep.
And um, I guess I have a question for Bonnie. That December, is that the due check for, for red, when you receive two?
I would imagine, yeah.
So, that could be voided also, which is a thousand five hundred dollars, but this is for seventeen.
Yes, we brought that one back. And like, we just, just three years, he's doing the one.
Again, again, this is about January, so they could have been, it could have been something.
Yeah.
It has been voided.
Nice, yep.
On system.
Hello? Carl Roy, building and CEO. So, the winter is starting to pick up a little bit. It's always snow out here in winter for building, but um, starting to pick up a little bit. There was um, two new building permits, one pool permit and five electrical permits. That resulted in one thousand two hundred sixty dollars collected in fees. But there are, I did a lot of inspections for builds that started before the winter. So, you can expect four new homes to be getting occupancy here shortly. In the next month or so, you should expect fourteen homes. Two of them over here and uh, two over in the middle. There was, with the new season coming, now that the winter's cleared and everything, we have new notices put out to all the original offending properties and new offending properties for trailers with the ordinance being gone and uh, dressed with. I went with uh, these guys out to a bunch of properties to let them know they weren't within ordinance anymore. I've been working with people then, some of them were accepted, some haven't been accepted. But a lot of notices got sent out this, uh, past month, beginning of last month. And they have to begin, to the end of this month to show some progress with it before I have to proceed to the next stage.
How many notices were sent? Maybe just five.
Six. Some of them, what, like, there's like two, at least two more that go like duplicate really. Other than like, one dog, again and again. And um, yeah, I mean, that's pretty much, pretty much all I got for, for long, for now.
I just have one quick question. So, how, um, anything that has an outstanding, that had issued a building permit and hasn't been signed yet or done an inspection in the past year, you'll be following up on that, because they'll need to fill out a new application and stuff and.
They'll need to have, ask, accept, ask for extension.
Okay, all right.
Yep. And then after, the same with the two-year. After two years, they're gone, so now they need to reapply for a permit.
Oh, so they're only allowed a one-year extension?
You're allowed a one-year extension and then it can be renewed entirely.
Right.
For that, for two years.
Are there any of the permits to new builds that I have to see if they have driveway permits too?
I don't think there's anything new coming up.
Yeah.
There will be one up on Pinkham, I can't remember what side of the road, but uh, I don't know if he's applied for it or not.
Yeah.
Uh, one of the guys that have built down here.
Yeah, he did.
That's the only other new one on Pinkham I know of. Can't think of that one. Both of them slowed down.
Anything else?
Carl, thank you, Carl.
Good.
All right, now we have a question from Mark Chee.
Hope free and whack. Thank you, Mr. Chief Ferguson, Miss Hughes. I'll be you guys for a while, I'll ask you, I got, considering you speak, so thanks for helping me. Aflac, uh, ninety-four percent brand recognition thanks to the Abmations Duck commercial, which has been going since two thousand and two. Uh, most people don't know what we do, so in a couple of minutes, I'll give you a brief overview of what we do. What we're not is health insurance. We don't wanna talk to health insurance, we don't wanna talk to whatever's comp. Uh, we have plans to pay the policyholder over and above whatever health insurance coverage. We have a multitude of plans. I put a packet in front of the selection and you don't have to go through the packet. Uh, there's four brochures in there, um, policies that I sell the most. And those are the plans that if you wind up with cancer, have a heart attack, stroke, some catastrophic event, an injury, your employee might be in a financial bind, and that's where Aflac comes in. We give people money to help them pay their bills, okay? You're in a hospital, hospitals are nice. They'll say, give you fifty dollars a month if you have a bill. Hanford won't do that, Ever Source won't do that, okay? Your rent, your mortgage, okay, they're gonna want money. So, the money is given to the policyholder, paid deductibles, copays for rent, money shares to help you financially, okay? Uh, as for me, I have about fifteen municipalities I work with. I've been doing this for twenty-three years, had a pleasure of working with Mr. Green, on the phone. I work in Rochester, some have worked over Portsmouth, uh, Town of Newington, Blue Market. All of them have great health insurance. Inspired have great health insurance. I can guarantee if you have some type of serious injury, medical event, you're gonna be paying money out of your pocket for something, okay? The reason I'm here is to hopefully get approval to offer to the employees. There's no cost to the town to offer it. Uh, if you'd like to contribute towards an Aflac plan, like City Rochester does, you're more than welcome. Most of my accounts don't. It's payroll deducted, you can pre-tax it if you'd like, if you have a cafeteria claim. If you don't, you can set nothing, no cost. Claims, very important. I should probably spend half my day fighting and helping people with claims. You don't have to call an eight-hundred number, although Aflac has got a great customer service team. I can help with your claim and file your claim for you. The best part of my day is calling the policyholders saying, your claim's twenty-eight, ten thousand dollars, okay? You don't have to worry about the financial under, it just gets well, okay? So, that's what we do. Question?
How, how bad can you go to file a claim?
What would you have a policy at the time?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Cause I've had a policy since my children were little, so, through the banking system, so I still have.
Just without the policy?
Yep.
Oh, good for you.
You still have to. I had to take the kids off when they get, what, twenty-one or something?
Twenty-six, twenty-six. Yeah, yeah. I can, I can file, just need paperwork. You have a voo-woo? Cut finger, just need to pay for, don't need a cut finger, I can send it in for you.
Yeah, you can see which policy you have.
Yeah, I can help you with that.
Where, where are the um, costs?
So, most are about a dollar a day, okay? We have a cancer plan we have in front of you, just to confuse people, we have three of them.
Right.
Okay? The ones we have, twelve dollars a week, we have one for eighty dollars a week. Okay, the accident plan is seven dollars a week. The heart attack stroke plan, anywhere from four dollars, uh, depending, depending on age. So, the accident plan, we have three of them, we have three of these. So, when we meet with employees, we have a budget and they go to ten dollars every spend. Okay, you can pick out a hospital, maybe for seven dollars a week, and maybe a critical illness, ten dollars for four dollars a week, okay? So, they're all about a dollar, dollar fifty a day. I'm seventy-three, so the age-danded ones, they're gonna cost me more than Chief Ferguson, who's about twenty-eight. He told me.
You hate him, you too.
Good thing, prices never go up. We've done the business since nineteen fifty-five. Once you buy a plan, that's when you pay. I'm not gonna raise it if you have a plan, if you leave, they have life direct, same price. The age-danded ones, the younger you are, the lower the cost, so I'm not gonna raise it when you give your debt back to the age group. We have life insurance, we have vision insurance, we have dental insurance, which I believe money has. But the main ones, um, if you need a family, uh, you don't have that insurance, you're not gonna lose your house, okay? Help people, I'm not gonna be a family dentist, sorry. Unless you need a lot of work. But I think our cancer plan was founded nineteen fifty-seven, I believe, when uh, we came out with the cancer plan and uh, kids are covered in no cost on the cancer plan, it was twenty-six. Got a good job. But that's what we do. We just help people financially when medical issues arise, so. In order to open a group, you've already answered, all right, you have one.
Okay, shut up.
My loss.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, in order to open an account, we need three employees to sign up. Sign up for any plan, it has to be free to start an, uh, an account. Once the account's set up, if one or two left, uh, bungs is one on the invoice, we can, and you bill. We bill over years, we allow you, uh, four weeks or whenever your billing period is. We collect employees premium and you bill them a month later. So, you have their money, you're not responsible for any policy hold.
So, Mark, right now you're looking for us to say you can work with our employees?
Uh, yeah, first, that would be the opening account, which uh, basically uh, it's done online. How many employees do you have, who's eligible? Part-time firefighters, seasonal, are they allowed, ten ninety-nines are they allowed? Uh, you want us to set up a cafeteria plan for you? So, somebody has to sign off, someone authorized. Once it's authorized, then they give you a, a group number and I can go in and need with employees individually in a group. I don't wanna step on anyone's toes, so I do whatever you ask me to do. If you wanna do it as a group, I'm usually with, on the phone, set up a time, come in, the employees, different shifts, whatever, you're comfortable.
That's okay. When I originally got my policies, we were, um, the banking system had a very good, um, cause there were so many. You got put in that kind of pool. So, is, is, do you got, do you have any rules for like the municipalities?
Yes.
To get the different rates?
It's standard, S I C, standard industry code. You guys probably have one based on, but all municipalities get a B and B, B rate.
All right.
Wires get an A, librarians an A, homeowners an E. So, the only rate that affects that rating is the accident plan. And then short-term disability, which I'm not sure if you offer short-term disability to the employees or not.
So, if you want, so if you, you know, it's honestly, it's okay if you talk to employees and start that process, but you only get three employees. Wow.
Uh, my boss fired me.
And any existing plans to enter that pool?
No. You can transfer from direct to, they used to let us do that. I don't have the check. I have a check to see if you, your bank rate is better than the rate here.
Right.
B rate, and this is the payroll check, you can transfer.
Like these those are.
Like if he's hurt, payroll deducted, and if you pre-tax, you can say he can't.
No, just comes out of the account.
Yeah, yeah, I just let it transfer here, we might get a, if you pre-tax it, so you can get a hundred percent more, so. Yeah, if you want to, you can buy direct. We can sell three policies direct, accident can, it's very important on a critical illness, but they cost maybe fifty percent more. So, here you can group, group rate, so. But uh, yeah, next step, set up an account. You can meet with the employees individually, department meetings, or in a group, whatever you want to do, so.
And so, what we have is decide who's gonna be eligible to be, to participate. Perfect. We'll just go from all the costs to the town, right, or? No, I was just saying, you know.
It might be wrong saying, I think the, the can, having worked in the city of Rochester, the cancer plan is very popular for firearms. And the city actually pays a hundred percent of the freedom to put a cancer plan for all the firefighters. But I think that that might be something that the firearm would certainly need to discuss the cancer plan and inspire kind of commitment, building more from the cancer. So, they were looking for motion to allow start, for start trauma?
I want that motion.
Eric?
Again, so it's being allowed for anybody to work for the task, involved, involved in, it just works.
That's up to you.
No, I'm, I'm asking the board, that's.
Do you think you volunteer or work?
I'm just saying, you know, because then you, I'm just, I just wanna make sure we have.
Do they have any volunteer anymore? Do you want, I mean, I thought that question was a decade years ago.
Well, that's the question, so.
That's what I'm saying.
I, I, I think it should be for people who work for the task.
We actually get a question?
Yeah.
To make money.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, no, that's fine, that's.
No, that's okay.
I just wanna make sure we have.
Okay, good question.
Okay, and I'm fine with that, I'm, I'm good with that. Okay. And I'm fine with that. I'm good with that. I just wanted you to have that stipulation in there.
Okay.
Uh the fire department, like in uh New Market, Purdue, but the town allows them to do, so they can get a group rate on the accident plan. We can't, they allow them to sign up. And then after a month, they pay the first bill and then they bill them at home. So that allows them to get a group rate.
All right. So now we've reduced the process. Our next step is to?
Set up an account with someone whoever's authorized. They do it all on their laptop.
What's that? Uh so I'm looking down at this.
So we look, so we're gonna need to see if we have enough people.
Correct.
You heard me.
You do a giveaway. Yeah, I'll, I'll get in touch with Mark, whatever, and come speak with the fire department, speaking.
Do you have these packets in?
I can only.
Uh we do.
That we can send out.
Yeah, absolutely. Since this is not an account, I'll send you a go for reports with the same plans, but uh it's called a landing page. Only goes to those accounts. We don't have that. We have one, but we'll send out go for reports with the same plans.
So we'll start the process with the information and then everybody will reach out and we'll line up. We'll be your help.
Great.
Thanks very much.
Appreciate it.
So just, and just as a follow-up, it's like, it'll just point you essentially and another later into the next page. Because I'm so busy, so I just wanna um, I'm just like, okay?
Well, right now, I'm letting you into this because I think through all states, we are being paid for some of the disabilities. And it's still becoming like uh, so I don't know.
Okay.
So I'll have to look into it.
All right, our next thing? Say what, say what, you?
Yeah.
Cancer.
All right. Uh I said I'd be, I'm all being, earlier you bothered, I'm all being to everybody that's uh me. So if you start a discussion involved in that?
I'll be honest, I actually, I was gonna say that. Did you send the.
I did.
Okay, sorry. It's on the paper. One chance. Uh I do know the one thing that I did see in there um is that I thought it was some discussion or maybe this is the future of what we discuss when we get through it is I, I thought it was going to be a recommendation for changing for P T R. And I didn't see that.
Okay.
So I was, I didn't see it and so I just wanted to know, was that, is that intentional or was that overlooked or what?
That was more.
Okay, all right. Um I will now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read that in the next week.
All right, so table that.
Don't you have to send a, we give employees a thirty.
Yeah, we just.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm asking.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna start going through what our recommendations are going to be, and then once we come to the government consensus, it'll get sent out for.
So yeah, we won't be involved in that, the next meeting or anything. It'll just, you know, just looking to make sure we're all in the same page moving forward.
Yeah.
All right. Um, all right. The wish removal contract. Um so I did reach out to Pierre Lefebvre. Do you think he'd be able to be here for one company?
Uh it's not.
The office.
People want you to know from.
We thank you.
And I thought tonight, what's?
Uh what I heard is that yes, he was gonna be here today.
I guess. I thought he was supposed to be here, so um we can, we can reach out to him to.
I wouldn't reach out to him.
Maybe he can come, he needs to come.
I'll see if he's able to come along and say that.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. Um kind of what's that?
Uh so yeah, so we um, this was, I asked him to put this on there. So at the planning board meeting the other night, last week, we were discussing about having Robin have access so that she could upload things to the website. It seems how live it gets jammed through her and she has to forward along. So um and she, and I asked her and she has no issues about doing that and what else?
So this board one that she was called, started working on is a communication policy that's going to be included with you guys. Um which involved actually including Robin in the process of getting her access. I'll also contact it. Our account cloud, who provides us our website to looking to seeing if we use a way to characterize what people are accessing.
Right.
So.
Okay.
But so I've started that process already. So I probably should mention that.
No, no, that's good. I just, it was just a key mark of we thought because that way she doesn't have to forward along and you know, she can get dark and so forth. Comes through her.
Yeah, and deep there, the conversation started a little much or one of the playing word we was or? Okay, because last thing that you sat down, we're happy.
But before we kind of dumped it on, we talked and we asked her if she was gonna be, she was looking forward to talking about it. Yeah, and she said she found that she was.
She, that was a key moment.
So I just want to make sure it's gonna be work.
Like I said, her and I started having that conversation before I started working on uh communicating policy for that, so. All right. Do you have any comments?
Did Jim back out tonight?
No, he's home. He's a dog.
Oh, I didn't.
Okay. Probably will be scheduled meeting.
You know, this is our, or?
I don't know.
However, okay. Eric, Eric?
I just want to speak up and say um thanks to all the people that came up. Um thanks for our history conference weekend. It wasn't quite what we had planned, but mother nature doesn't like us. So we did the best we could and everybody seemed to have a great time.
Oh, people are fun. They look like they're fun.
Yeah, I wanna say thank you to all my volunteers because they are amazing. We have the best team. Um having a study. Change was just we need to know and work with what we've got, so big thanks. And I'd also like to say um we have been approved to have the school for our next craft fair. So May thirty-first, we will be having a craft fair at the school. Um you know any vendors uh in touch with us?
It says May thirty-first.
Yes. Eleven to four.
Local duty, your, when your employee.
What's that?
Local duty, your employee for the town for the school.
Yeah.
Do you have prices for uh booths or tables yet?
Um so the eight foot table, eight foot space, you'll have to bring your own tables over there. Eight foot space is fifteen and six foot is ten.
Four, seven, whatever it's there.
Six foot?
Oh.
That's ten and eight foot is.
Do we have a date for the little kid out?
No. We have not received the dating class yet.
So if you wanted uh two eight foot products, you could get that, thirty dollars.
Yeah.
Now I've got five on the line. We'll, uh, we're pretty well at that. We um keep still waiting for the dating catalog. We have, we have a quick drop-off meeting on the line.
It's not actually May, right?
All right, uh all right. Any other, do you have any comments?
Uh just curious, we had updates on um remote access for the laptop.
I'm not working on that. Sorry. Like if I work on that, it's just trying to cooperate with, that has been difficult, but I have to work on that. I'm not working. All right. All right, public comment?
Thank you. I have three uh things that I wanted to make sure that uh you're aware of. I sent the board uh an email from Solitude who is our contractor for the purpose I do, we're gonna do for Mill Coyle. And you, you need to electronically sign uh the document. That document for that interseam. It's their contract. Yeah, it's their contract. If not, uh I sent it to the board uh last week. If when you go into the link, uh and it says that it is not, it's expired, just read it again. If you have problems, you, on the email, it's the person that Solitude you called, you said that. They need a contract so that they can proceed with the application uh for the permit for this, well, contract is between us with our Mill Coyle purpose activity. And then, then they have a permit. I sent you a copy of uh part of their permit process with the state you need to sign. You need to sign up the uh, I brought a copy here of it, so I'll, I'll give you this for you, which you need to sign and you need to send it back to them. You had that? Yeah. Then I printed out, I printed out the email that I forwarded uh from Solitude that has that electronic contract in there. If you have any problems with that, uh we can get a hold of you. The reason for this delay is Joe was on vacation, I was on vacation. So we're a little behind you while they'll, they'll get it done. And the last thing is, I want to remind the board and anybody, uh that's, when, there's one meeting for her. All right, is that the one you heard? I believe it is it. Uh we're having a meeting with uh underworked solving engineers, D P S, scrap and briefing planning, here at five thirty to uh further go over the contract for the semi-able management people population plan. And what, what does it mean to tell us, okay, what are we doing now? What are we gonna be doing? When is it gonna happen? What's gonna happen? Uh so we're really starting to do things. Uh at four, at four thirty, uh we're gonna have a visit and anybody can join us on the two projects they're gonna be working on this year. Our lake land beach and rain garden at the Antrim shore with the Indian shore barrage. So the engineers, D P S, scrap and briefing planning and the semi-able water should advise committee will be going over it. So I heard the board, if you can make, go over and see that it will be discussing beyond site, the, what the issues are, what's gonna happen and so forth and so on. So if you may, add a public as well, also, they're welcome to this, maybe at five thirty here in the old town hall, so.
And four forty in the beach, is that what you said?
No. And then we will P D F over the lake land and then P D F over Antrim shore. Spend ten minutes there, uh just because of the travel. This one we're getting on, when they're here, like uh, this week there was, I didn't see it, but I wasn't running around. Uh they were doing some survey work. Uh next week, uh that was the top one in here. Uh next week, we're gonna do the D P S coming out and we're going to fix those sites for bacteria sampling of water in those like sites. And then part of that implementation plan is to provide uh testing sites where we can uh test the box. And they'll, they're, they can be anywhere around like, but they've got their primary over lake land, over there. So that's all I got. There's any question, any problem with that electronic thing and the the permit thing, just you gotta.
So generally, like that going?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you don't let me know until I go online, you can get it to.
No, I'll, I'll mark.
And John, you want the Sunday part tonight, right? Does a separate signature you require to have it?
What's that?
Now the second, you need a.
That, that, that would be.
You need a signature, then you need another form of signing.
Yeah.
So what will happen here?
Well, yeah, I think you can sign whoever wants to sign. And then I'll, I'll forward that. And this is what the, this is what this site looks like and that's her email.
You forward it what?
Yeah, I did. Yeah, and uh I went in that, the original one, and it said it expires. So if there's any problems, we can get a hold of that.
Uh.
What was this date taking of your, your report for twenty-two?
What was that again? Sorry. Thank you very much. I'll give you, I'll make, I'll get it soon.
All right. And any more, more comment? No. All right.